Alright, we're all. We're all set. This is the meeting of the zoning board of appeals. It's October 11th at 7:05 PM, a virtual Zoom meeting. This is our president, Woody Chidick as chair. Dave McMorris is vice chair. Charlie Higginson is another voting member, and then we go from Matt Watkins, Michael Dickey, and Lee Darst. So those are the six, the latter three are associates. So we have two hearings tonight. I can't find the agenda, but it's not important. I think the first, do we have any sort of business that you want to conduct, Cassandra, before we have these two hearings or?
Not necessarily before. The only administrative business is just approval of minutes and decision upon the next.
Next meeting?
Just announcing the next meeting, I suppose.
Yeah.
But we don't have to do that before. We could do it after.
Okay, why don't we, for the sake of the applicants, dig into that first? So I will say right off the bat, and I think the order is 124, is that right, South Main, and then 167 Sawyer? Wrong, backwards?
Yep, backwards.
Okay, well, at any rate, I'm going to turn this over to the, put it in the capable hands of Matt Watkins, because I'm going to recuse myself, or am recused, from both these hearings. So I will mute myself. And.
Okay, yeah, as Woody said, we first have up 167 Sawyer Street, which is a continuation. So Cassandra, if you could bring forward the representatives for 167 Sawyer Street?
Good evening, John Toriyaki, Toriyaki Architectural Design. And I'm here as the architect for Sawyer Street project. I'm just going to share my screen for a second to go over the additional drawing that we submitted. And this was basically a revised survey that showed the house that is nearest, which is 163. It's located approximately 18 feet from that lot line, so probably about 35 feet away from this house. And all the other houses, just going back to the aerial, they're quite far away across the street, out of the bounds of that plan, so they didn't make it. And then there are no houses on the west side here, which are just shared driveways. So we just provided that information per the board's request, and we had gone through the drawings, just as a quick overview of this project. Adds a second floor bump out along the back. We have gone through all the numbers, so I won't do that again unless the board has any questions.
No, thanks, John. I know that was the, the follow-up action was the revised site plan with showing the property boundary. So do any of the board members have any questions for, for John?
I don't have any, Matt.
I asked for it, and this satisfied, what did I ask for? I just believe we ought to have the adjacent buildings before us when we make our decisions.
Agreed. Yep, thank you. Cassandra, are there any one in the audience that has a question?
It doesn't look like it.
Okay. Well, yeah, nobody has a, any other questions for John, then I'd make a motion that we close the hearing for 167 Sawyer Street. Moved and seconded. All in favor? Matt Watkins, aye?
Hey, McMorris, aye.
Charlie Higginson, aye.
Lee Darst, aye.
Mike, aye.
Okay, great. It's unanimous. The hearing's closed, and we'll deliberate on that this evening. We do have a draft decision to review, so. Thanks, John.
Great, thank you.
And we'll keep, we'll keep John around for the next hearing, which is a special permit for 124 South Main Street. We'll open that continued hearing. Cassandra, I see Andrew's been promoted. So John, is it, we just have yourself and Andrew?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Okay, I'll hand it over to you if you can introduce yourself again for the record as well.
Sure, John Toriyaki, Toriyaki Architectural Design, and homeowner Andrew Patton also joining. Once again, I'll share my screen to briefly go over the additional material that was submitted per the board's request. Just to go back to the site plan real quick. We were talking about non-conformities, and I had brought up the shed is not conforming, but if, with further thought, the shed actually is a conforming detached accessory building because it's set back far enough away, and it's a little over six feet away from the lot line. However, we saw maybe the letter that documented two, to a separate non-conformities for this lot that we think would allow this project to be filed under section 9.11. And I'm just going to go back to the letter that we submitted. I'm not going to read every single line, but basically section 9.11 titled "Extension, Enlargement, Restoration, and Alteration of Non-Conforming Use." So we were focused on non-conforming use and whether that's applicable. But that was the question that was brought up by the board. And the board was wondering whether section 9.7H would be applicable. So what we tried to do in, with this letter is to essentially outline that this project conforms with both. However, we do think that being filed under 911 was the appropriate section to be filed, to file it under. So then the letter goes into two separate areas that outline why the project is not conforming. Specifically, the current zoning bylaws require that in the floodplain and watershed protection district, no building or structure can be constructed without a special permit from the zoning board. And obviously, this building was constructed without a special permit in the flood zone in 1925. Therefore, it will be non-conforming with that aspect, and all the section numbers are outlined in the letter. And the secondary that we found a non-conformity is that in the mentioned section of the bylaw here, specifically section, under section 9.12 B1A, there is a requirement for all projects that are submitted that are within the watershed protection district to comply with the Massachusetts State Building Code. Specifically, the section of the building code that addresses floodplain and coastal high hazard areas. In other words, if a project does not conform with the building code and is in the floodplain, it would automatically be non-conforming. So that's the second non-conformity that we outlined here, since this building has a full basement, no flood vents, with the slab elevation of around five feet or 4.9 feet, it's clearly not conforming with the state building code, therefore not conforming with cohesive zoning code. And then we added the summary of 9.7H and went through item by item, why we think that the project would have complied with this section if it were applicable. Well, we still believe that it's not, but we did outline that just, just to make sure we address any concerns that the board may have. But we didn't want to focus on this too much, because primarily we think that 9.11 is the correct section.
Right now, thanks for that, John. I know I had brought that up, and I I think your memo was very informative and, you know, provided some clarification, both. Like initially, I was looking at the dimensions, or kind of the dimensional non-conformities, which is like watershed non-conformities, and also the 9.7H piece, you know, was called out typically applicable to secondary structures. So I know for me, it was helpful information. So thanks for that, and do any of our other board members have any questions or comments?
I, I agree that the, that 9.78 is not what we want to look at. 9/11 is the appropriate section. I did have one note that I'd like to make sure that we remember. I know the zoning bylaw committee is doing some amendments to the bylaws. I'm bothered by, in 9/11, it says "extension, enlargement, restoration, or alteration of non-conforming use." And I think what we mean there is non-conforming structures, not uses. And I, I do think it's confusing, and someday it's going to be a problem. So I hope we can get that changed. Or maybe there's a reason it says "use" that I don't appreciate.
Okay, thanks, David. Anyone else have any questions? On the board? Okay, Cassandra, do we have anyone in the audience who has any questions?
Uh, no, it does not look like there is anyone.
Okay, then I'd make a motion that we close the hearing for 124 South Main Street.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All in favor? Matt Watkins, aye?
Hey, McMorris, aye.
Charlie Higginson, aye.
Lee Darst, aye.
Michael.
Okay, it's unanimous. The hearing is closed, and again, we'll deliberate on that. We have a drafted decision. And that concludes my tenure here as acting chair. So we've got to get Woody's attention back.
Um, okay, oh, wait. Okay, I'm back. Um.
Hey, Woody?
Yeah.
Did you get my comment on 9/11, the non-conforming use?
I did. I just made a note, because I can post the board at the end in terms of my sort of limited work with the zoning bylaw. It is limited.
That may, that may appear in other section of the bylaw, too.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think you're right, Dave. This is an aside, but given that everything that follows that introductory sentence deals with structures, it's kind of, kind of non secular for, for use to lead that. Unless KP Law, you know, town council would be able to explain to us why that makes perfect sense. It doesn't jump out at me. But okay, so we have no other hearings tonight. I would make a motion, sorry? Sorry, say something. The, we would move into deliberations, and I would turn it on over to Matt, your.
Do we have to officially?
What?
Do we have to officially continue 125 North Main, or when we?
No, that was continued last week.
And that's, that's appropriate?
Yeah, not, yeah, I think the, the minutes say that it was continued until November 11.
Okay.
Or whenever it is, November something or other. But anyway, continued until November. So no, we don't need any action on that one, Matt.
Okay.
Tonight. And that was at the applicant's request to continue it to November. So with that, I think we move into the deliberation phase, and I will again recuse myself.
Okay, so first up is 167 Sawyer Street. That was you, Lee, right?
Yes, it was. And I had sent out a draft decision earlier today. This, John Toriyaki did the, also, he did the presentation last week, explained that the house was built in 1880, so it's pre-existing non-conforming. They proposed construction would add a second floor over an existing one-story wing of the home. There'd be no increase in the existing footprint in the building. It's not a large change to the non-conforming area due to it being a second-story expansion matching the eve size. According to the proposed second-floor plan, the existing non-conforming area is 700 square feet. The proposed addition will add an additional 67 square feet, or an increase of 9.6%. The area in the current left facade that is non-conforming is 809 square feet, and the proposed additional will increase the non-conformity by 94 square feet for an increase of 12%. With a house this size, these increases are de minimis compared to the overall size of the current house in the pre-existing non-conformity. There are no immediate neighboring properties on the left side of the house, and the owners have a parking equal to 12 feet on the left side. At the last meeting, no neighbors appeared. There was no input. It was represented to us that the neighbors on the left side had been had been spoken to and had no issues. Based on that, I based on the evidence presented, and as they will be, no substantially, it shall not be more substantially detrimental than the existing non-conformity to the neighborhood, and shall not be injurious or dangerous to the public health or hazardous because of traffic congestion or other reasons. I'm recommending that we approve the special permit. Well, I'm recommending in my draft that we approve.
Okay, John. Two, I agree with the decision. I have two questions. Was this sentence somewhere in the decision that says the house was built in 1925? And I, I believe the 1880 is correct, so we should get rid of that sentence.
The 1925 was the, is the house on 124 South Main Street. And I don't believe it's in this decision. But I will proofread it again for that.
It's second page, last sentence in a paragraph, and I don't have the decision in front of me.
It says, well, actually.
Just eliminate the sentence that takes care of that.
Yep.
And the other thing that, in the decision, is it says the second sentence accordingly, after do, do notice and everything. I suggest accordingly isn't really necessary, and that wasn't the basis of my voting for it. My voting for it was that the changes are in the in the in the zones are not, are minimal.
Okay. Okay. Make the changes.
Did anyone else have any edits? Or I think, like, like Charlie and Lee, I'm in agreement with the decision as a whole. I thought it was a fairly modest expansion in a, in a good location for it, so. I'm good. David or Michael, anything?
Uh, I moved that we approved the decision as edited.
I'll, I'll second that, so. Unless, you know, yeah, we don't have any other comment, right? So moved and seconded. All in favor? Matt Watkins, aye?
Hey, McMorris, aye.
Lee Darst, aye.
Michael Dickey, aye.
That's unanimous. The next deliberation we have is 124 South Main Street. And that was something David put together, David.
Yep. This project is entirely conforming dimensionally on a entirely conforming building. The only reason that they need a special permit is because it is in the flood zone, and all of the work that's being done is going to, where the work is being done, eliminate coverage in the flood zone and reduce the ground coverage in the flood zone through this project. Putting flood vents in the part of the building that's being put there, and the deck is elevated. So what I have in this draft decision is an enormous amount of verbiage to essentially say that. I'm pretty confident that 9/11 is the appropriate section to apply here, and in the decision, I indicated that. But I also said that we note that even if section 9.7 applied, those provisions are also met. Because I think they are. And I figure as long as we have the belt and suspenders here, we might as well throw them both in.
Yeah, I think that was a good approach, and you know, I know I raised that question at the last meeting, and I thought that the memo was informative and providing clarity from the applicant, and I think the decision was the right one, and landing on 9/11 and and making reference to that. So I thought it was. I thought it was good.
I agree with the decision. I had some trouble saying that the structure was non-conforming, which was it couldn't be non-conforming in 1880 when it was built, or whenever it was. It wasn't, I don't know about 1880. Is there any way to word it so that it only became non-conforming when they started to make a constructive constructive change in the house?
It never became non-conforming, Charlie. The only reason, the only reason it's non-conforming is because the flood zones were created at some point, and everything was already sitting on the ground at that point.
That's, that, that's, that's my point. When it was built, it wasn't non-conforming.
Right.
Therefore, we're saying it was conforming, non-conforming. And I was trying to figure out some way of indicating that, there's, there's a difference. It was built so, in such a fashion that now it's non-conforming, but at the time it was.
Let me see. Yeah, in the first, under the zoning issue section on the first page, it says the existing property is conforming in all dimensional respects. I can just add there, non-conformities have been since created by the addition of bylaws regarding flood zones.
Good.
Okay, Lee and Michael, you guys good with it?
I'm, I'm good with it. Thank you.
Yes, I'm good with it.
Okay, I'd make a motion then that we accept the decision with edits. Or with the minor, minor edit. I'll make that motion.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All in favor? Matt Watkins, aye?
Dave, McMorris, aye.
Charlie Higginson, aye.
Lee Darst, aye.
Michael Dickey, aye.
Um, Mike, I forgot to put you in the voting part there. I'll get you.
Okay, that's good. So we'll bring Woody back just for the just for the board business to, to agree on the, on the dates and the minutes.
Okay, good. So Cassandra, our next, our next meeting is November. What is it again?
15th, 1/5.
Because of the national and local elections, or state elections, so November 15th. Does anybody have a known conflict with the 15th? Which is a Tuesday after, a week after the elections. I do not, but how about anybody else? Because we've got a couple of continuances.
Nothing that I'm aware of at this point in time, Woody.
I'm going to get back, I actually get back that day from traveling, so look on wood, everything's smooth. I'll, I'll be there.
Okay.
15th looks good to me.
Are you coming from far, far away, Matt, or?
No, we have a wedding in Florida, so I should be. And I think it's a morning flight, so I think we should, I'll double check it, but I think pretty confident we'll get back.
Cassandra, did we, last week, and I don't have, I apologize, I don't have those that agenda or notes in front of me. Did we continue the Chief Justice Cushing Highway, Peter Capizzioli hearing formally?
Last week?
It last week?
No, that wasn't before us last week. It was continued to November during a previous meeting.
Okay, I'll, I'll just sort of parenthetically add that if they're not prepared to close, to close the hearing in our November session, I will at least propose, you guys can all decide. I will propose that we close the hearing, because this is a year and a half. And there's no reason to go on and on and on and on without being able to impose enforcement actions, et cetera, because of continued hearings. But that's, it's a personal point of view. We can discuss it, and we'll wait and see what the applicant and his agents are recommending. But if it's yet another continuance, I'd like to certainly hear the reason why they are unable to close that hearing, or unable to, you know, yes, close that hearing. So that's just a heads up. There may be a compelling reason to continue it further, but we're not in a good position in this one, I don't think, from the standpoint of enforcement. So that's a, that's an editorial comment. We have a it sounds like we're all agreed on the 15th of November. Do we need a vote, Cassandra, on that, or just a?
I believe it was already voted upon at a prior meeting.
So we're just confirming that. Is there any other new or old business before us?
Minutes approval?
Ah, yeah, yeah, sorry. And the minutes I have are the minutes from September 13th. I mean, the, the minutes from last month were inconsequential. I mean, they were, they were just two two actions to continue the hearing. So did anybody have any comments, concerns for improvements to the minutes of September 13th? I do not.
I, I don't have anything, Woody.
Okay, Mike has heard from anybody else?
No, I don't have any. I used it for my decision.
Okay, Charlie?
Nope.
Okay, and Matt, any issues?
No.
I'd make a motion then that we approve the minutes of our zoning board of appeals hearing on September 13th. Woody Chidick, aye? Well, I, I moved. I need a second, sorry. Jumping ahead.
I second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Woody Chidick, aye?
Dave McMorris, aye.
Charlie Higginson, aye.
Matt Watkins, aye.
Michael Dickey, aye.
Okay. So approved unanimously. Is there any other business, Cassandra?
I don't believe so.
Let me just take a minute. I, I was asked, and I would like to involve anybody interested on our board. I was asked by the zoning bylaw committee, got that right, the ZBC, to kind of check over a lot of the material that they're wrestling with. And actually, there's a proposal that's going to come before town meeting, or proposed to come before town meeting, I should say, in December, to compress and relocate a couple of articles. In December to compress and relocate a couple of articles. There's a difference of opinion, I gather, between compressing two articles into one or continuing. The two or three articles, but just reordering them. I have not. Really engaged in terms of the construct or reconstruction of the zoning bylaws. There's no, what I can see is there's no real content here, no content change. It's simply saying that section one and section twelve, this is one proposal, really are dealing with the same issue. So I'm more interested in engaging farther down the road when it comes time to. Submitting to town meeting any content changes, be they dimensional or. You know, applications or rezoning or redistricting or whatever. We can certainly share that material with you. It's rather lengthy, like thirty pages. Those of you like me who do not have a life. Will enjoy reading all thirty or thirty-four pages, but. That's why I've sort of backed off a little bit, but. This is, I, I say that because we're not trying to keep anybody on this board out of. The, the review and the relook at our zoning bylaws, but. Whether Article Five comes before, I mean, old Article Five comes before or after old Article Seven is. You know, not of terrible interest to me and it's being kind of managed. Co-managed by KP Law, Town Council and the Judge Cutler, I think that's right, Amy, is it? I mean. Cassandra, is that correct?
Judge Cutler, yes.
Judge Cutler, who is, who is the chief justice of the land court, so knows a hell of a lot more than we all do. And, and Tom Callahan as her alter ego. But if you want to see the recommendations for restructuring as opposed to revising. The bylaw, I'm more than happy to get that to you. But. I don't know.
Woody, I, I got confused. I thought this zoning bylaw committee was to make suggestions. Which the town was going to hire a professional group to actually review and rewrite the zoning bylaw.
And they have, they've hired KP Law, which is town council. They have. Hired a person who's not off council, but, but a partner at KP Law, this Judge Cutler. Who lead a, lead a group. In, under her to take a look at our bylaws and to both revise and to streamline the order as well as deal with some of the content. Now, they can't deal with all the content because some of that is really sort of local knowledge based, but. Yeah, they're on board, they're hired.
Why are we restructuring if they're going to be restructuring?
Well, they're the ones that are doing the restructuring or proposing the restructuring. They're saying our bylaws have been, I mean, I'm paraphrasing, I mean, I'm paraphrasing, but have, it's a patchwork quilt. We've appended. You know, various articles over the last forty or fifty years, you know, some go here and some go there, and when you look at them. They have a lot, they, they are related one to another, but they're not in sequence. You have to really understand that something dealing with height appears here, there, and a third place. So they're trying to sort of put all that together without yet making a judgment in terms of, I'm just using height as an example, bad example probably. Without making a judgment as to what height should be, might be, what are the options? If you follow me. What they're saying is that the bylaw needs to be trimmed down and rationalized. So that if you're dealing with use, use and, and you know, appears in one section, not twenty places.
I understand that, but what I don't understand is why we have a committee to suggesting restructuring. And have paying somebody to review restructuring.
I don't know. I don't know.
Why we need twenty-two pages when it's really totally unnecessary?
Well, you know, the bylaws really kind of emanate, you know, statutorily. From the planning board. So Tom Callahan is planning board chair is also heading up the. You know, part of this review or, and he and KP Law are going back and forth a bit, but.
That's part of my problem.
Yeah. Yeah, well. I mean, this is why, I mean. You know, I'm going to be much more interested in that, as I think you are and most of us are in terms of the content itself as opposed to which section comes first, but I have to agree. That our bylaws, you know, unless you're. A real student of the bylaws, understanding. When you're dealing with a topic, that that topic may show up in five places and there are three or four overlay districts that have never been activated and. Et cetera, et cetera. You know, they're, they're kind, they're messy. I, I, I think they're approaching it the right way. Get rid of the crap, excuse me, and. You know, organize it topically and then deal with content. As opposed to trying to change. I mean, you know, whatever. Some parking regulations, seven point three B, I mean, it's. That follows, I think. Because there are anomalies in the bylaw, as we all know. I mean, there, and there are omissions. There are an awful lot of definitions that are referenced in the bylaws, but are never defined in the definitional section of two point one. That's kind of crazy. So I, I think that's the approach they're trying to take. Now, how that plays out, I don't know. But I. Other opinions, David?
Are these changes intended to go before the next town meeting?
Well, I, I see, and Cassandra, please check me if I'm wrong. I, I see that one proposal is, is to put forth a. Almost an enabling section, section one, which is the purpose of the bylaws of zoning. And section twelve, which has to do with enforcement of zoning. You know, everywhere and something else before a town meeting. Personally, I don't know why we're doing this piecemeal. But.
Yes, I, I, there's, to my knowledge, there are a few that are trying to be pushed forward towards. You know, the more, the special town meeting, I believe, but the majority of everything would be going to. Or is hope to go to regular town meeting.
You know, do you know why the, the kind of, I also, resequencing. Of two or three bylaw articles is going to go before, is proposed to go before town meeting, Cassandra, in December?
I believe that that was the want of members of the committee.
Okay, I, I honestly, I mean. That's as much as I know.
Well, I, I do have one concern, if there's going to be a more immediate town meeting, if there's one in December. I think it's very important that the town bylaw. Relative to notice on building permits gets changed at that town meeting.
Okay, make a note, I will surface that. Okay, so the notice of a building permit.
Right, is a town bylaw, not a zoning bylaw.
Which says that it has to be advertised in the Patriot Ledger.
Correct, and it's not.
Which is not being done. So technically, all these building permits are. Or the notice period doesn't get triggered because they're not complying, there, there is no notice.
Right.
Legally.
Right. And we've defined what notice is and then we don't do it. Okay, not we, the town.
Does that, all right, all right, yeah, no, I think if they're going to move section twelve, which is enforcement. And appeals and all that good stuff, special permits and. You know, so on and so forth, yeah, that would be appropriate there. I still don't know why they're taking a piece of it. And, and putting it.
The first meeting and they were. One of the first things that they noted was that they didn't want to try to rush anything forward this year, just. They wanted to make sure that the educational campaign behind it was.
Right.
Obust and they felt like if they went forward one more time with something that. Died on the floor, it would probably be the last, you know, zoning initiative that.
But I don't know if that decision has been made.
Deaf to it, you know?
Cassandra, has that decision been made or is it simply a proposal?
To go to special town meeting?
Yes, this fall.
I believe, I don't. I don't think anything's been filed, so I believe it's a proposal at this point.
Because as we all know, it has to go to the planning board and then to the select board. And I would hope that, yeah, you're right, Matt. I mean, that was a mistake we made a year and a half ago and. Moving a couple of enabling or process. Sections forward to this fall doesn't really leave. The content discussion, which is major, and it always amazes me at town meeting where. Seemingly, I'm probably exaggerating, the majority of people say, I didn't know that was coming before us. What's this about? Well, you know, this is after the warrants have been mailed and we've had a. Public meetings and so on and so forth. So I'm with you. I think we have to, have to overdo communication. Until people say, I got it, I got it. No more, please. Lee, you're muted.
Also, I, I did go to the town meeting last December and I think if more of the other. I guess boards in town have support for the zoning changes. The selectmen, I mean, it was, it was approved to put forward, but nobody, I don't believe anyone from the selectmen spoke in favor of the changes. And I think that that might be something that would be helpful in the future.
It's major. It's major. Yeah, no, they all, they all. Took a pass. They may say they were in favor of it, but if they're silent and they're seen upon as the leaders of this town. Taking a pass is the same as voting no. In many.
Yes, and that I think was one of the issues is, is that it, it appeared that. The zoning committee was trying to just push, put some changes through. Think, I think if more people would get, you know, get up and speak in favor of them. The changes, I think it'd be more successful at town, at the open town meeting. And plus, that was the one about the lights and people were all. All entrenched in their views.
Well, I could, I mean, I've made the point, I'd be happy to make it again. I also think. And that we need a multimedia campaign. I mean, there's a lot of different social media platforms. There is print, there are handouts, there are mailings. So on and so forth, there are Zoom meetings. I think we've got to do it all, not one, not two. And, and, you know, give people more than adequate opportunity. I don't think. We really. The current buzzword socialized it very well. A year, year or so ago. Charlie?
And remember that so traditionally, the special town meetings don't consider zoning problems, zoning changes.
I mean, if I had, Matt, go ahead.
I know the communications lead for the town has been trying to socialize like the different meetings that are happening and. I've seen a lot more, you know, I guess posts about it, I think probably. Before you'd walk into a town meeting, though, I think the, the last time, a lot of people. Had no idea how that related to them or could impact them or. I think, you know, it really takes one person to stand up and say, well, jeez, if we vote in favor of this. Everyone on our street's going to have this or that, and it just kind of floats something out there. So. With other material that says this is the change, this is how it would. And, you know, this is why we're doing it, or this is what it would incorporate into it is, is really what. Is going to.
Yeah, and, and, and I think the way to promote this or, or to deal with it is not to lecture people, but to say, what are your concerns? Are you going to be impacted? I mean, you know, as is typical of almost any. Issue in politics. I mean, two thirds of the concerns are, are due to misinformation and, and. Get those out and deal with it.
And I think somebody needs to be prepared at town meeting to address. The issues that people stand up and, you know, the sky is falling, this is going to happen. Everybody's property rights are going to be terminated. So many needs to be prepared to stand up and address them. And, and also, I think it's very. Difficult when you have people who are on public boards with jurisdiction over these sorts of things. Stand up and say, I'm speaking as a private citizen, I don't like this. There needs to be an actual response to that kind of thing. You can't just leave it laying out there.
Yeah, I mean, personally, it seems to me that if you're on a board, you go with the board. And you don't, you shouldn't be speaking as a private citizen in that respect. I can speak as a private citizen in something that doesn't concern zoning. But I, I wouldn't dream of, you know, let's say the vote is, you know. I don't, whatever the hell, who cares, forty-two, and if I were two, I, I would just simply go along and endorse what the zoning board did.
Right.
Well, the, the vocal opponent was Clark Brewer.
Of course.
That town meeting and he had a special permit pending in front of this board. At that time, so. So I do agree with David. I think that someone has to be prepared to, to get up and respond, respond to. To the, the, the people. I really, there was only a few people who got up and, and. But they really suggested, I mean, just, it was conforming with the state. Zoning and that just did not come across clearly.
No, I mean, there's a live and learn and a lot of, a lot of mistakes, and that was certainly another one. I mean, you know, just. Simplifying and educating, but Charlie, you hit your pencil up.
Well, I was gonna say that the bylaw committee is gonna, has a town meeting at Rolford Commons next week, which might. Let it inform us on some of these topics.
How is that being publicized? What's that again?
Cassandra, what did you just say?
Oh, I, I was going to speak, but I think we overlapped a little bit. So the Justin is sending out postcards to everybody. I'm not a hundred percent if they've. Been sent through the mail yet, but if they haven't been, it was either today or tomorrow. Been posting on Facebook. We've been trying to get any other boards or committees to speak about it in their public meetings to advertise it. There've been flyers posted, I know. I know that Justin was trying to get members of the committee to speak on the radio. I'm not sure that if he was successful in getting that or not. He's done a few videos with Lauren and Clark advertising it to post on social media. And I think there was going to be some handouts at the soccer game on Saturday.
Can, can I suggest that someone keep a record of all of these things? So when some people stand up at town meeting and said, you know, the first I've heard of it, nobody ever let us know anything.
Justin's doing that.
Prepare to discuss exactly how many opportunities they had to educate themselves.
Yeah, good point. I, I mean, yeah, I mean. Don't get me going, but, okay, well, anyway, so we have a meeting next week, and not we, but there is a meeting next week to. Explain some of this and. It's both virtual, Cassandra, as well as in person, so.
Yes. Yes, so it's going to be, we'll cut comments starting at six thirty and it's going to be hybrid, so it'll be live streamed on. Social media and one four three TV, and then people can also tune in via the Zoom link as well.
Six thirty, what day?
The seventeenth.
Seven, Monday. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I've got it right here in my calendar. Okay, six thirty. I see a ZB. Public forum on the harbor and village, is that correct? Or is the topic broader?
Nope, I believe that that is the general topic. They're gonna break apart the sessions a little bit and have a small break in between. And we're hoping to have some food and beverages provided as well.
Okay, and that, those are topics are unrelated to what's being proposed for the December special town meeting? I think.
I believe so, yes. I I believe it's, I mean, there's certainly going to be some specific. Talking points to kind of help guide the conversation. And just or really facilitate conversation. But. It's meant to be broad to get a conversation going.
Yeah. And I think if we, all of us do our job and. Listen or or those conducting the meeting ask for. Audience input as opposed to. Transmit. We'll we'll also be better off. But. I my my other concern, of course, is I think is sort of embedded in some of many of your comments is that. Early December is not that far away. And I've seen zero on on this beyond what I've been asked to look at, those thirty-four pages of. Reordering. Which nobody wants to. See, read, or talk about. So I don't know. I mean, I hope, I hope we're. In back of everything, there's an inadequate communications plan. I'm sure Justin will. Do do what he has to do, but. Well, at any rate, I guess we could talk it up, but but that harbor, that public forum next week is not. The same as what's going to go to the town meeting. That's what I'm getting. Different topic, important topic, but probably coming up in the spring. I don't know what the rush is, but we'll see. So. Tune in or show up.
Another. Different subject. Cassandra, is there any move to move from Zoom to our old meetings?
Not to my knowledge, no. At at some point, we are going to have to go to hybrid, but there's not been any firm. Plan in place. Unfortunately, there's a lot of logistics that go into doing it hybrid, which the town does want. And it's. Has a lot to do with the capacity of staff as well as the space and the equipment as well.
Space.
Well, you have so many different boards or committees meeting on the same night, and there's only so many spaces that can accommodate. The hybrid equipment as well as everybody.
Okay. All right, well. So I will see some of your faces next week and if not, I'll see you in. November, the fifteenth. And we'll have a couple of continued hearings that I think are more complex than. Than the. Couple that that you guys went went through recently. I mean, we've got the Beechwood thing, we've got the. Construction at one twenty-five and. Capizoli and and whatever, so. Those are all. Have legal connotations.
Continued complex hearings and then do we have? Is it too early to know if we have new stuff on top of that?
So there is, technically, there are two new hearings, forty-nine border, which we have seen before. That is continued for the special permit, has also put in an application for variance for the same property.
Yellow house that was quite tall.
And then there is another new application for ninety-one Atlantic Ave, which is Hollis's new property, I guess.
Is that a floodplain issue?
I believe there, yeah, to my knowledge, there's a lot of flooding there.
Yeah, it's a house that notoriously. First floor. Floor flooded. Charlie, I think it's Amos House.
Amos House.
Yeah.
Yeah. Which has been sold to. McDermott.
Oh, it wasn't sold to Hollis. I may have the wrong house. Okay, well, whatever.
The Seres House and 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 the old. Hope now, so. Both changed hands recently.
Yeah, most one of them. I think I think it's it's not the here, the here, man, never mind. It's it's a house that is. Kind of always flooded, so I'm sure that he wants to raise it up and. You know, make it mu- much more compliant to building code, so. We we shall see. I haven't seen any paperwork on it. Okay. Anything else? Anybody wants to join the zoning bylaw committee? Please, with my blessings.
Thank you.
So we just need a motion to adjourn.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Good, it's moving seconded. Woody Chitikai.
Dave McMorrissey.
Lee Darst.
Okay, voted unanimously. All right.
Thanks, have a good night, everyone.